Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the October 20th, 2014 Wakegan City Council Meeting. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Moiseo.
Here.
Alderman Beedling.
Here.
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Alderman Tempest.
Present.
Alderman May.
Present.
Alderman Velco.
Here.
Alderman Vivera.
Present.
Alderman Cunningham.
Present.
Alderman Conken.
Present. Please stand for the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance.
Father, we thank you again for another city council meeting. We thank you for our mayor, for all of us, for all of the administration. We thank you for our city. We thank you for all your blessings, your best old homies. We never forget those blessings. For God does that track for the schools that are sitting on our children. In the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen.
(inaudible) Under Mayor's comments, the only thing I'd like to say is it's time that we settle this teacher strike. It's impacting and affecting everyone in our community. Better heads need to prevail. They need to get to the bargaining table. They need to get this done. It's certainly causing hardships among the parents of the students. It's causing hardships among the teachers themselves. I have talked to the governor about this. I've talked to Terry Link about this. I've talked to several union people to try to intervene into this process. Hopefully, on Wednesday or tomorrow morning, I think, 10 o'clock tomorrow, Greg?
Nine, they're supposed to be.
Nine o'clock tomorrow morning. They're going to try to hash this thing out tomorrow. I was made aware of the fact that they can't go past June 30th, is the last day they can be in school. And if they go much longer, the children, I don't know what's going to happen, but they may lose a whole school year. But hopefully not so. Just hopefully by tomorrow, we'll get this thing hashed out. But that's all I need to say. Audience time, Ms. Lefriedi.
I'm speaking in regards to your item number 10C. My name is Davana Lefriedi, and I'm the owner of Your This and That Shop at 114 North Genesee Street in downtown Wakegan. We're an upscale resale shop, and we've been at this location for almost three years. I come to the city council tonight for help. On Saturday, October 25th, a one-day pop-up store will be setting up at the Jack Benny Plaza to distribute clothes to the homeless. As an individual, my heart goes out to the homeless, as it could be any one of us. But as a business owner, it hurts our business. On a daily basis, our customers have to put up with the less fortunate, the panhandlers and the vagrants, whereas they congregate to the Jack Benny Plaza during the warm weather. This is not good for the people shopping downtown, nor is it good for the appearance of the downtown. So I come here this evening to see if this one-day shop could possibly be relocated outside of the downtown area. The downtown businesses could really use your help in this matter, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Motion to approve the minutes of the October 6, 2014 city council meeting. Motion by Alderman May. Second by Alderman Conken. All's in favor?
Aye.
Alderman Beedling, go ahead, sir.
Let the minutes show, but I voted no on the bill run of October 6.
So noted. Maria? Thank you, Alderman. Next is resolutions, proclamations, presentations, appointments. Item A, resolution honoring beach volunteers. Maria, would you please read that?
Recognition of the organizations that volunteered to help keep the Wakegan Municipal Beach clean in summer of 2014, whereas the Wakegan Municipal Beach is a popular destination for visitors year-round. And whereas activities at the Wakegan Municipal Beach peak during the warm summer months with many thousands of people either seeking refuge from the warmer temperatures, participating in the multitude of cultural and recreational activities centering around the area or just passively enjoying the natural beauty, scenic landscaping and majestic beauty of the facility. And whereas the city of Wakegan worked with various community groups and organizations to help keep the grounds of the Wakegan Municipal Beach free and clean of litter and other debris during the 2014 season. And whereas these organizations included Friends of Wakegan Beach, Wakegan Main Street, South Genesee Merchants Block, Greentown Yoga, Wakegan to College, Wakegan PD Neighborhood Policing Unit, American Outfitters, St. Dismas Youth Group, Christian Neighbors Church, St. Anastasia Club's Scout Pack 16, Lake County 19th Judicial Court, Juvenile Services, YWCA Tech Girls Clean Power Lake County Campaign. And now there be a resolve that a suitable boss copy of this resolution signed by the mayor and the city clerk be presented to these organizations at the city council meeting on this 20th day of October 2014 to help publicly thank all of them for their selfless service and worthwhile contribution to the community.
Motion by Alderman May. Second by Alderman Tempest. All's in favor?
Aye.
If Alderman May, would you please step down with me and present these certificates?
Do you want to say something?
No, go right ahead.
Yep, go right ahead. Is this on? Okay. So, as everyone knows, this summer, we piecemeal together a maintenance program for our beach. And we had the eco ambassadors from the CAG group and Open Lands provided us, and the Park District also provided us with some volunteers. But that only covered Monday through Friday. So at the beginning of the summer, the Friends of Wakegan Beach sent out a call to many organizations throughout the city, and that's all the organizations that the mayor just read off. And so because of all the man-hours put in by most of the people, and you see of all ages in this audience, our beach was cleaner than it's ever been in years. These are the people that clean the beach every weekend this summer. So I thank you from the bottom of my heart. The city thanks you for your time and your community service. Okay? So, Wakegan Main Street and Jane Ferry can accept on behalf? I'm good. Stay up, we'll get a big group picture, okay, Jane?
This one is for Alderman May. She's very humble, but she works for quite a lot. I think those of you who work for her at the beach, you know, committed and dedicated to that beach and to the city of Wakegan. So Lisa, thank you so much.
On behalf of Friends of Wakegan. Thank you, Mayor. Next, we have the South Genesee Merchants Block Group. So it's Jamie McCaffrey, Joe Hughes, George Torres, Bob Sobel. George, you're going to have to accept on behalf of your group. This group actually volunteered twice this summer. So I want your camera. Sorry, folks. David's operating the camera, so the video back there. Green Town Yoga was also Jamie McCaffrey's group. We'll set hers aside, she's not here this evening. Wakegan to College was Elise Dinkers and, oh, Laura Rios, there you are, come on up. Please, bring your group, bring your group. This was probably one of our two largest groups this summer, the Wakegan to College group. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, thank you so much. The Wakegan Police Department Neighborhood Policing Unit came out along with American Outfitters. I don't see them here, but, oh. Yes. I apologize. She wears so many hats, it's hard to keep them straight. And I don't, the Reddicks family from American Outfitters came out that same day. Then we had the St. Dismas Youth Group. Charlotte Callahan will accept on behalf of them. We had the teen group out, as well as many parishioners. And then we had the Christian Neighbors Church. Okay, we'll have to get this to Jennifer. We'll give that to Jane. Then we have the St. Anne's Cub Scout Pack 16. And their den leader, Ben Conway.
You guys still working my air? Come up here. Walk up the aisle and get a better picture. Come on up.
You can come up, moms.
Absolutely.
We also had the Lake County 19th Judicial Juvenile Services, Raymundo Juarez. I don't see him here. We'll get that to him. He came out on a few weekends with some of his children. YWCA Tech Girls, Jen Saviano. We'll have to get her next time she comes for a shadowing day. And then we had the Clean Power Campaign, let me get it right, you guys, Clean Power Campaign, Lake County. Thank you. Come on up, group. It's Christine, and Dulce, and Karen, and David, and Mitch. They had an enormous group of people out there, hundreds. Are we going to do one big group picture or no?
Yeah, yes, yes. Get everybody up to that volunteer.
Let's do one big picture. Please, because we hope to duplicate this effort next summer.
Everybody.
I want to stand with the whole guy.
They are.
Let the kids go in front.
So I'm going to come to the front now.
Hold on, guys, we got all these people.
We got more, we got more.
Just go in the front.
Go in the front.
Just go in the front.
Kneel on the front, yeah, go in front.
Sit, kneel, bend, stand.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations, congratulations, everybody.
Ladies and gentlemen, that just goes to show you what an integral part volunteers play in this community. Could you imagine if we would have to pay those people to do that job all summer? Thank you so much. Your efforts are very much appreciated. Next item is a Make a Difference Resolution. Madam Clerk.
Make a Difference, October 25th, 2014. Whereas for more than 20 years, USA Weekend Magazine, in collaboration with Points of Light, has brought you Make a Difference Day. And whereas Make a Difference Day is the largest national day of community service, and whereas on October 25th, 2014, millions of volunteers across the nation will unite with a coming mission to improve the lives of others. And whereas a coalition of Wakegan residents and community groups have worked tirelessly over the past many weeks to be part of this national effort by organizing a street store that will operate on October 25th, 2014, as part of a service project. And whereas Wakegan event will benefit the homeless clients of following organization pads of Lake County, Lake County Catholic Charities, the Staben House, Eddie Washington Center, Alexium Brothers, and several more, including the very unfortunate residents who do not currently utilize support from the above places. And now there be a resolve that a suitable boss copy of this resolution, signed by the mayor and the city clerk, be presented to the grassroots coalition of volunteers that are planning and organizing the Wakegan Street Store at the city council meeting on the 20th day of October 2014 to recognize their vital contribution and service.
Is there someone from that organization present? If not, we'll make sure you get a copy of it.
Courtney and DJ Urban spearheaded this, they're Seventh Ward residents, but they have a big group of volunteers working with them on this project, unfortunately due to her work circumstance.
Would you give it to them?
Oh, I'd be happy to.
Motion to approve the resolution by Alderman Beedling. Second by Alderman Newsom. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passes. Community reports, Finance Committee, Alderman Velco, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Finance Committee met this evening, and Item A on the agenda voted to amend Chapter 20 of the City Code of the City of Wakegan regarding the city's hotel or motel occupancy tax, specifically amending the Sunset provision and continuing the hotel or motel occupancy tax at occupancy rate at 6% until April 30th, 2017. An iso move.
Motion by Alderman Velco. Second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Vivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Item B, voted to authorize the proper city officials to enter into an economic development agreement by and between the City of Wakegan and HD Supply Facilities Maintenance Limited, and iso move.
Motion by Alderman Velco. Second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
No.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
No.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Vivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Last item, Your Honor, was there was 12 new business licenses that were brought into the city last month, and that's all we have.
Thank you, Alderman Velco. Public Works Committee, Alderman Moiseo.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item A, authorize the proper city officials to reduce the letter of credit for JLH Midlane Club LLC, also known as The Greens at Midlane, for the final acceptance and two-year maintenance bond for the completed improvements. It is recommended the final acceptance of JLH Midlane Club LLC, also known as The Greens at Midlane. Iso move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo. Second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Vivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Item B, thank you. Authorize the proper city officials to participate in the upcoming county auction on October 25th, 2014, to dispose of old and wrecked vehicles, an iso move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo. Second by Alderman Tempest. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passes.
Item C, award Lakers List Station generated to low-qualified bidder of Kelso Burnett of Gurnee, Illinois for an amount not to exceed $42,285. Funds are available for this contract in line item, hold on, it's not on here, it's over here, line item 555-916-027691, an iso move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo. Second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Vivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Your Honor, a couple of informational items. The leaf schedule is out. This year, advance disposal is doing it. The people that collect our garbage, an advantage to that is in the past when we've had Public Works have to do it, we've had to literally shut down Public Works, and we can't get to any other projects in the city. So by having advanced disposal do it, it frees up Public Works to stay on track and get any other projects that we have pending, get them done. Because if not, Tom used to have to shut down Public Works, basically, and pull everybody off of what they were doing to do leaves for two months. So this is a huge advantage to the city by having advanced disposal do it. Again, remind people, your neighbors rake the leaves on the parkway, not in the street. When they get in the street, if it rains or blows, they get into storm sewers, and we got more trouble. Rake them to the parkway, and then they will get picked up. I know some people still put them in the street. Please, try to remind your neighbors or yourself, rake it onto the parkway. The schedule is on the website, there's pieces of paper out there, I think it was in the paper also, so there's plenty of places that tell you what the schedule for leaf pickup was. Thank you.
Your Honor, before we go, on that note, I understand it is out, Alderman Moiseo, in the paper and in our website, but I think we have that, is that reverse?
Autodial?
The autodial. I think, I know in the past when Public Works was in charge of that, just because of the, you know, the amount of leaves, sometimes they fell behind. I think it would be better if we know which ward or which wards are going to be in, so we can send that autodialer, send a message out to everyone, maybe a day before they come. I think that would also help out, because now that our Public Works is not directly involved, it was easy for us to call Tom and get some things done. Now, it's going to be two phone calls. I think it would be better if now, if we can make that phone call, you know, a day prior to, and let them know. I think that'd help. And I'm just, my customer service hat on right now. That's a suggestion for you.
Your Honor, David, is there any way we could do the autodialer to call the wards for leaf pickup? The only problem is you have, sometimes you have a jigsaw on the wards, and I mean, you know, we call and tell somebody it's this week, when actually, I mean, maybe we think that out, maybe you think?
We can figure out how to do it in a practical sense, yes?
Yes.
So that's two on that, so we're the next one, we can figure out.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chilton.
We've both reached for it twice, so maybe not this time, but the second time, we might have it, three times, excuse me, yes, correct, three times. So maybe not this first time, but the second and third time, maybe we can get it dialed in, and as we say. Thank you, David. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. There is no old business. There are no reports or communications. New business, recommend action by Corporation Council. Item A, approval of payroll dated October 17th, 2014, in the amount of $1,378,413.87. Final payouts in the amount of $12,853. Bonus checks in the amount of $6,732.41. And civil service in the amount of $2,250. Motion by Alderman Velco. Second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Moiseo.
He just stepped out.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Vivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Item B, approval of bills dated October 20th, 2014, in the amount of $784,284.88. Motion by Alderman Velco. Second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Moiseo. Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Vivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Item C, use of Jack Benny Plaza on October 25th, 2014, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. for distribution of clothing. Motion by Alderman Beedling. Second by Alderman May. Roll call, please.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Alderman.
Do we have to have it at Jack Benny Plaza?
Yeah.
Perhaps being lot B, on County and Clayton there, or perhaps at the township? Do they already provide the homeless services, I think?
Before you go there, can we explain what this is?
What's going to happen Saturday is we're going to have a giveaway to the homeless. We're going to give away clothing, boots, shoes, winter coats, things that they need during the winter months. It's all donated items.
Who's sponsoring this?
Lisa, can you?
So it's, the street store is a national movement, okay? It's happening in cities all over the country. And so a couple in the community decided they wanted to do it in Wakegan, and they are partnering with pads of Lake County, Lake County Catholic Charities, the Staben House, Eddie Washington Center, and Alexium Brothers. So over the last several weeks, they've had a collection bin at the Wakegan Park District at Hinkston. So I know that there's a different volunteer that goes every day and picks up, and then they do all the sorting. And so on one Saturday, from 9:00 a.m. in the morning till 2:00 in the afternoon, they'll set up like a store, but it's free, okay? So the homeless can come, get coats, boots, backpacks. I think they'll be serving like warm drinks, you know, hot cocoa or tea or coffee, and the other organizations are also helping facilitate this giveaway. It's a garage sale, but everything's free. It's a rummage sale, but everything's free. So there's a big group of people in Wakegan that have been working on this, and I'm sure countless of Fieldhouse regulars have been contributing and making donations. So it's just a one-shot thing. By 2:00, it's closed down, moved out. It's a one-day event, and it's just like a movement that's been happening. I mean, you can Google the street store, it's happening across the country. Does that answer questions?
I hear someone would have maybe called the businesses downtown because things like this affect them, and we want our businesses to survive downtown. And when they call me with problems like this, I have to address them, and...
I can't speak directly because I'm not on the committee. I've just been asked for information because I knew the people were in my ward, so I asked them what they were doing, and I've been helping with getting donations and things of that sort. I think the reason why they chose the downtown location is because that's where most of the services are, and so that's where it's easier for these folks to get to this giveaway.
Yeah, they're down on Lake Street and Genesee, that's where the services are.
I...
Somebody would have maybe talked to the township. I wish they would have planned to have it there, or that would have been...
No, no, I won't, no, no, not to plan to have it there. I think what, we have so many social agencies in our community that provide these kind of things. Why can't those donations go to those agencies who are already doing that and let them distribute? Because they know who the players are. We don't. We don't. What you're gonna have there is a bunch of folks come there, get these coats, get all of this, and then the folks who really need them gotta still go back to those agencies. That's just my personal experience in dealing with these agencies and the homeless. You know what I mean? This, you know, just to have this, this is gonna be an open market, and you're gonna have just everyone flooding there, and the unfortunate part is, and I'm not trying to be critical to this, this is an outstanding thing that I think we want to do, and this just shows the spirit of who Waukegan is. But to drop that dead smack in the center of the city of Waukegan is downtown, when those agencies who do this, particularly now from Pads and Salvation Army, and believe me, I am one who have all the agencies in this ward, I got Salvation Army, we had, we had the Pads, I mean, and we have more of a Pads centers centralized in the first ward. Now you're gonna move that out? Allow those guys who do this already, let them do it. We're reinventing the wheel. I don't know, and I'm pretty sure Lisa has really looked into that, or this street, I don't know the name of it, but I just don't think to open it up to downtown Waukegan is gonna serve the purpose for our homeless, particularly when they go to those agencies who they know, they understand, who understand their needs. That's just my opinion. I don't want to knock it off, I'm not trying to knock it or say it's, we don't want to do it, I'm just giving, I don't know if it's really gonna serve the purpose of our homeless, because other people are gonna take advantage of it. That's my opinion now.
Understood.
It's my opinion, so...
I just wanted to know how this, how this location was selected? Is it, do you know who selected it?
Well, I know that two representatives came to my office and asked me if I would be opposed to it, and I certainly am not opposed to it, because I do believe that this, this is instrumental in saving people's lives in the winter months. So I think it's very important that we give homeless an opportunity to get the clothing they need to sustain themselves through the winter. So I was not opposed to Jack Benny Plaza, I never looked at the perspective of impacting the business owners downtown. I looked at it as a good social service opportunity for the city of Waukegan to partner with this group and give away much-needed supplies to the homeless. And where it's held is irrelevant to me. If you choose not to have it there, I will go down there myself, and I will direct people to another location. But I do think it's a necessary, it's necessary for our homeless, so where it is is irrelevant.
They're not competing with those other agencies, they're partnering with them. Those other agencies are involved in the whole process. So it's not like, I mean, they're part of the process, they've partnered with the group that wants to facilitate this giveaway.
From my perspective, I get complaints from the businesses, they hang out in their parking, they do things in there where it necessitates calling the police, and it's a problem from my perspective. I appreciate Alderman Cunningham weighing in on this, very eloquent. But from my end of it, I get nothing but complaints. It's not a pleasant experience for our downtown businesses, and they're just looking for a little relief there. I would prefer, if it could be put somewhere else, at least in Latby County, Lake, down the street on Lake and Genesee would be ideal, in my opinion, but...
Ladies and gentlemen, I don't have a preference where it goes, I just know that it's a necessary, it's necessary for us to allow this opportunity to our residents who are less fortunate. Wherever you tell me you want it, I will go there myself, I will change, I will walk to that location, I will move people to where the new location is.
Can you let them know?
I'm just asking you to, yeah, well, it's pretty much been, it's been publicized, so...
Mayor, how about the plaza right here in City Hall?
Yeah, that's fine, that's absolutely fine. If that's, all they're asking for is permission to do this. The location was an arbitrary location, where it is is of no consequence to me.
How does this council feel about the plaza between the police department and City Hall?
Saturday.
It's a Saturday from 9:00 to 2:00.
Nothing going on Saturday.
Nothing.
Yep.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So now, we're gonna amend this.
Dan, we need your help on this one.
We're just gonna amend it. The amendment now, we're gonna move this location to City Hall, between the City Hall and the police station. Okay, so, now, the motion is to allow this to occur between 10:00 and 2:00 this Saturday at City Hall, between City Hall and the police station.
Correct.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Okay, thank you.
Now, don't go out and say Alderman Beedling and Cunningham didn't want to say this now.
No, no.
Please. Facebook, don't do that to us.
It's not, it's, the location's not important, just that what we're doing is. Okay, item D, approve of raffle sale application for the Men's Church Association Boarding League. Motion by Alderman Conken, second by Alderman Rivera. All's in favor?
Aye.
Item E, approve of raffle sale application for Jester Sports and Social Club. Motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Tempest. All's in favor?
Aye.
Item F, approval of Treasury report for the month of September 2014. Treasury, anything to say? Treasury, Slav?
Not on the report itself, I just wanted to say that the audit is coming in fine, and we should be filing on time, which this year is very important, because in the past we had to put that in the packet if we go out to bonds. Now we actually have to, from now on, new law that we have to report it. It's a separate report to let bondholders know that we've filed late. And so it looks like everything is gonna be complete, and I hope to give that report at the next city council meeting. I want to thank everybody in every department that's been involved.
Thank you, Treasurer. Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Cunningham, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And it'll be placed on file. Ordinances and resolution, item A, ordinance, amend section 21-122 entitled Limited Parking, Handicap Parking Only, North Side, in front of the property commonly known as 520 Cummings Avenue. Motion by Alderman Cunningham, second by Alderman Beedling. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Item B, ordinance, amend section 21-122 entitled Limited Parking, Handicap Parking Only, South Side, in front of the property commonly known as 841 Commonwealth Avenue. Motion by Alderman Cunningham, second by Alderman Beedling. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Item C, ordinance, amend section 21-122 entitled Limited Parking, Handicap Parking Only, West Side, in front of the property commonly known as 422 West Moreland. Motion by Alderman Moizio, second by Alderman Rivera. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Item D, ordinance, amend section 21-134.1 entitled Residents Permit Parking on Butrick Street, East Side, from the intersection of Butrick Street and Golf Road to a point 308 feet south of said intersection. Motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Conken. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Item E, ordinance, authorize a proper city official to execute an addendum to the mutual aid box alarm services provided by prolonged mutual aid events in accordance with the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, policy. Motion by Alderman Conken, second by Alderman Moizio. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman's time, madam clerk.
Alderman Moizio.
Thank you. A community's soul is its educational system. Attractive, progressive communities are places that have invested in value their soul. Investing and valuing in the soul is not a win or lose tit-for-tat, myopic attitude. It is an understanding that if this investment in value is not sound from the inside out, everything else begins to fall apart. Just like ripples in a body of water, this damaged soul will permeate, spread sometimes quickly, sometimes slowly, but the damage will eventually reach the shore. Well, Waukegan, we are reaching the shore. This lack of investment and value in the center of the soul is coming to the shore. After these ripples have reached the shore, this damaged soul will be broken. There may be a winner, and that winner most likely will be the people that have, have not really invested and valued Waukegan, other than for the riches that have lined their pockets and affected their soul. We, as a community, need to ask the elected keepers of this soul, the school board, to look at their own soul and ask themselves, is this the investment, the value, that you want for the soul that you have been given the monumental responsibility of protecting? I was here two weeks ago, and I said the longer this went on, the worse it would get. It's getting worse by the day. That's what happens when you have labor negotiations like this. Each labor negotiations is a little different from my experience up here, and this one is totally different. No one wanted this strike, but it was a, it wasn't something that was a knee-jerk reaction by any means. Again, I don't have the time to go into all of it. A newspaper article won't do it justice, a Facebook page won't do it justice, and a two-second news interview won't do it justice. There's a lot that goes into it. But I know, the school board members that I know, Anita Hannah, Tommy Ryan, Mike Rodriguez, Sharon Pearson White, I know this is not them. I, not the people that I know. That's not how they operate. Tomorrow, they're gonna negotiate at 9:00, I hope they can get something done, because, again, the longer it goes, the more the soul will be damaged. And you may not ever get it back. The mayor has said it, I think everybody up here understands it, we can do all we want up here, but if we can't attract families to come here and stay here, and you can't attract teachers to come here and stay here, it's a losing battle. We may be the backbone of the city, but if the soul is falling apart, the rest of it doesn't mean a damn thing. I urge people to talk to the school board members. It's a little easier to talk to four than 1,200. It's simple math. It's a lot easier to get four than 1,200. We need to get this done, it's just gonna continue to hurt. Thank you.
Alderman Beedling?
I have a little different perspective on the school strike. I look at it as somewhat as extortion. Children left, held out of school, especially when I drive down the street and I see picket signs, people wearing like a sandwich board that says, "The longer they delay, the more the children will pay." Or, "Honk if you support the teachers." I spoke to that individual, and I said, "Would you please put that sign away? You're not making any friends in this community." "I appreciate your point of view, sir," and she continued, marching with her, "Honk if you support the teachers." This is a poor community here. We're stretched to the maximum, these teachers want a lot of money, and I don't think a lot of the residents realize that it's not sticking it to the man, they are the man. It's gonna come out of their real estate tax bill, and it's gonna be a good sum. I don't know what teachers should get paid, however, it seems, you know, when you apply for a job, you know what the pay scale is. It's not trying to play catch-up and take it up into another income tax bracket. It is what it is, you know, it's an eight-month-a-year job at best, and most of them work over the summer, I think. I hope the teachers would scale their demands down substantially, be kind to the taxpayers of this community, because we can't afford these large pay increases that they're asking for. And once again, I ask the teachers to please act with dignity on the picket line, don't block the sidewalk with your chairs, pedestrians need to be able to walk down the sidewalk. Don't encourage the horn honking, you're annoying the people that are paying your wages and benefits. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Alderman Newsome?
Pass.
Alderman Tempest?
Yes, as a former teacher, I feel I should say a few words in regards to the strike. It's surely not good for our community. It's not serving the purpose that it's intended to. I would ask the teachers and the board to sit down and negotiate in good faith and think in the long term, what is best for our community? What is the best for you in the long term? I think you became teachers because you wanted to help kids and see them grow mentally, physically, and spiritually. And I would hope that the superintendent would use some guidance in the board and bringing these two sides together, because it has gone on much too long. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Alderman May?
I'll just touch on the teachers' strike briefly. I would like to echo Alderman Beedling's. I do get a lot of phone calls about the noise and the people disrespecting people's yards and properties. So it just, I know this is a very, you know, there's huge groups of people out there, and I understand that, but we can just make sure that we're respecting people's private property. And I do want to give a shout-out to all the groups out there who have really stepped up to take care of the kids during this time. The Waukegan Park District is doing phenomenal programming. The Waukegan Public Library is doing programming during the day. Boys and Girls Club, everyone's trying to do everything they can to fill in the gaps while the kids are out of school. I know the United Way is in the background, trying to work on meals for the kids. Every day we're just hoping that it's gonna be over, but there, there are a lot of great groups behind the scenes that are, are caring about the children, so I wanna thank those people. I also wanna thank the council for recognizing all the volunteers at the beach this summer. It was quite an effort. As you know, David Motley and I were heavily involved, so David, thank you. I think we make a good team. I think we've got a good, we've got a good idea of how we're gonna handle it in the future from here on, you know, until, until we're, the, the economy improves and we're, we can provide some more service down at the beach for our residents. I think the volunteers have really stepped in and made it, it's just, it just was beautiful this summer, so thank you to all the volunteers on that. Leaf vacuuming, oh my gosh, so the 7th Ward had the leaf crews out today. Unbelievable. Four, six guys to truck, they have such a system, they are burning through the neighborhood so fast. It's no, no knock against Public Works, those guys are hard workers, they just don't have the manpower. So kudos to Advanced Disposal, I think we made a great decision on that one. I'm so glad we decided to retain the curbside vacuuming. They were doing a phenomenal job today. So kudos to everyone that supported that contract. The leaf, the leaf program, I believe, is gonna be a huge success this year. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Alderman Velco?
Thank you, ma'am. Three items. First one is Tom Hagerty, this is the third week in a row I'm thanking you. You boys did a heck of a job up in Midlane Estates and Southern Hills, the drive up there. I know people think I'm lying, but I got two phone calls, I had a resident come to my home to thank me, to thank you. You're doing a hell of a job up there. The second thing is, a lot of you know that I'm a staunch supporter of the downtown and the Genesee Theater, and I would like to thank the general manager, Jan Gibson, and well as the sponsors, Uline, NRG, First Midwest Bank, and obviously, again, the Friends of the Genesee, because Kenny Rogers is coming in, The Temptations, Judy Collins, Michael McDonald, Engelbert Humperdinck, and then I'm sure The Nutcracker, I believe, is coming in also for the, for the children's, for the ballet and a couple other kid's shows. Masters of Illusion, I believe, is coming in also. So again, if those of you haven't been down there, really take a look, get down there, take a look at some of these shows. The new management individual that's down there is bringing in some good shows again. The last thing I had, excuse me, I went into Smoking Gun today, the same Smoking Gun that we gave a resolution to last council meeting for their 50th anniversary here in Waukegan. So I went in there and bought a couple of items, and those of you know that I smoke cigars, so I went in there and I bought a few cigars. And on the counter was sitting this bag of popcorn, GH Creators, C-R-E-T-O-R-S, and I had never seen this before. So I looked at the back here, and I'm gonna read briefly, bear with me, because I've got an article that I wanna read also. "It all began in 1885 when great-grandpa Creators invented the popcorn machine and our family began perfecting the art of popping corn. His modern machine appeared at the Chicago Columbian Exposition in 1893, and for five generations we followed his corn-popping footsteps, taste-testing recipes around our kitchen table. Today we make our caramel corn just like great-grandpa did in old-fashioned copper kettles, one batch at a time, then we mix it up the Chicago way, with our rich, creamy, aged cheddar cheese, corn to create the perfect combination of sweet and salty. You don't even have to come to Chicago to try this special treat. From our kitchen to yours, enjoy."
I'm hungry, bro. I'm hungry.
I'm telling you, Mayor.
I'm telling you.
So I look over to the left side, and you don't have to go to Chicago, because it's made right here in Waukegan, Illinois. So I found this article, "Waukegan Snack Company Relies on an Organic Touch. In an age of bits, B-I-T-S, and bytes, B-Y-T-E-S, a Waukegan company is working with corn, heat, oil, and occasionally sugar on technology unveiled in Chicago at the World's Columbian Exposition of 1893. And business is popping." Popcorn popping? "Popcorn and snack, it's snack maker, it's snack maker, Cornfields Incorporated is enjoying double-digit growth and international expansion on the strength of natural and organic products, company president Claire Creators said. Creators is a great-great-great-granddaughter of Charles Creators, the C. Creators &amp; Company founder, who rolled his patented steam-powered popping machine onto the grounds of the Chicago's World Fair more than a century ago. Claire said her company follows a marketing strategy that dates to its founder, boots-on-the-ground promotion. She said that Charles Creators sold mostly candy and roasted nuts in his store when he began making popcorn. Claire's father, the late G. H. Creator, left C. Creators &amp; Company and started Cornfields in 1991, producing corn and other products sold under other brand names. The company launched its own brand, G. H. Creators Popcorn, in 2010, focusing on naturally-made popcorn. Its G. H. Creators Organic Line offers a version that includes extra virgin olive oil. The company also offers a brand called High, I'm Skinny, a grain-based snack that comes in sweet potato, veggie tortilla, and multi-grain, grain, sweet onion flavors. Creators said the key was to innovate with natural products rather than simply high-volume popcorn. The company touts a focus on manufacturing slash, or manufacturing natural slash organic and better-for-you snacks and promotes both of its brands as free of GMOs. Creators said the focus coincided with strong growth in that sector and the retail food market. A niche became a mainstream, she said, and here we are with the foundation in place, ready to provide it. Creators said that about 300 employees are working three shifts a day. The company says it cooks caramel for caramel popcorn in copper kettles, one batch at a time. It says employees, not machines, add ingredients such as butter or brown sugar and cook each batch over an open flame. At the correct temperature and viscosity, the company says, workers then pour the ingredients over freshly popped popcorn and mix it. I'm proud to say this company is in the 8th Ward. It's at 3,800 Sunset, and until I saw this bag today and looked over on the left side where it says it's manufactured in Waukegan, Illinois, I did not know existed. So it's at the supermarkets, G. H. Creators, for those of you, my wife noticed it right away, it's got the GF symbol on it, it's gluten-free, go at it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Alderman Vera?
I just have one thing, and I spoke earlier today with the mayor about it, as you know, Ebola, you know, it's headline news all over, and I was just curious, you know, if, if our fire department is prepared for something like that, our hospitals, I think it would be very important for some of the leaders that are involved with the Lake County Health Department, you know, here in the city as well, that they would come to this council and, and, you know, show us to see if they're, you know, how prepared they are for something like this. You never know, so. Mayor, that would be something that I'd like to hear about, not only to us, but, you know, the community itself, so. That's all I have to say about it.
Alderman Cunningham?
I guess to touch on and echo what Alderman Mosia and Alderman Tempest has already said, hopefully we can get our leader, the leaders over there from the union to the negotiating table, to really come together and get this strike over with. It is time. Our teachers, administrators, our children, it's time for them to get back to school, and I'm confident, I'm very confident, that that's gonna happen. So let's just hope cooler heads prevail in that situation. Second, I wanna briefly talk about a couple of things that have really been on some people's minds. As I go to the Walgreens that's located on Lewis and Belvedere, and now this new grocery store that is being constructed just to the south, and if I go a little bit further east, there is a new dollar store. What is troubling to me, particularly with the Walgreens location, I look at the same Walgreens that was on York on Sunset in Lewis. The egress and ingress of, of those two, of that Sunset in Lewis is adequate. You can get in there, meaning turning, a turning lane, and you can exit out of there with no problems at all. I look at the one at Belvedere in Lewis Avenue, that is a total mess. I don't even know how that building was even allowed to have a, an entrance to turn like that. I look right down the street now, the dollar store is being constructed. I see the same thing happening there, at the same thing, at the same level, at that new grocery store is being constructed right on Lewis Avenue. I think, Your Honor, we need to have Dave Marion, our traffic department, go over there and take a look at this, just observe for about a half an hour. You're going 30 to 35 miles an hour, going eastbound. You pray that the light catch, because if not, then you're trying to make a stop if someone's trying to turn in there. A single car cannot make a right-hand turn into Walgreens. They can't do it. That dollar store is being constructed now, I don't even know how that's gonna happen, and I'm, I'm, I'm assuming that the road, I forget the name of that road, that, that, that goes right off the, what is the name of that, Tommy?
Glen Rock, Jack Benny Avenue.
Jack Benny Avenue. I hope, I hope that that thing is resurfaced and repaved, is part of the whole contract. I'm not trying to complain about the project, but I just think more until the project should, should go into this, because I don't even know why they're doing it, first of all. I don't even see where they're, they're getting their, they're gonna get their market from, but they, obviously they know what they're doing. But to, to make a turn into that off Belvedere, particularly from 7 to 3, impossible. From 3 to 6, another impossible. What I'm looking at there, there's gonna be traffic accidents waiting to happen, or a whole lot of tickets being, being issued there. I truly believe we need to take a look at those two, and that Walgreens one, that is, that, I don't, that is just a mess. And, and the complaints that I get personally, because I often, you know, I, I go there, I, I live right by there, it is always, Alderman, Alderman, are they gonna expand this, you know, the, the turning curve there? And I don't know, can they do that or not? I guess that's a question for Dave or, or even for Russ, but something needs to be done there quick. It is bad, it is real bad. And there's a bus stop right in front of the turning lane. Smart thing to do, but unfortunately, it's a bad location. So I'm asking, Dave, you and Russ, spend about a half, you don't even need a half an hour, you probably need 10 minutes over there, to see that something needs to be done with the egress and, and ingress for that particular location, and hopefully, the other two are the same way. I don't know what's gonna happen right here with the new, what is that, uh?
Save-A-Lot.
Save-A-Lot? I don't know how they're gonna go south.
Can't.
They can't. It, it's impossible. The compound there with the school that's over there right now, from 7 to 2, there is no way, no way that can happen. It's, it's hard to even go north on Lewis Avenue between the hours of 7 and 4, maybe 7 and 3, give or take. It's just, I, I'm just hoping that we're, they're looking at it, but more so us, because we're gonna get the complaints, not them. We're gonna get the complaints. So that's my, you know, that's my soapbox, soapbox for the day, and Mayor, Dave, you and Russ, I, I truly need, I don't know, can we even make them bring that curve, cut that curve a little bit more so you can have a, a much better turning angle into, into Walgreens? It is bad, you know, it is bad. If you have a SUV, cannot happen. Cannot happen. And I think that's a, that goes to those zero lot lines. That's what that goes, that's about that zero lot line right there. So when we, when we looking at those again, hopefully we take a look at that, but thank you very much.
Alderman Concan?
Thank you. Alderman Cunningham, I concur with a lot of your statements and definitely tried to convince the people, especially the ones building the Save-A-Lot, to go into one of our empty buildings, but they were insistent upon that piece of property, and it's gonna, like you say, it's gonna be very tight getting in and out of there, and I hope everything works out. Something I wanna mention, I wanna remind everybody, I realize that this won't hit the air until late Sunday night, but trick or treat is this coming Sunday from 1 to 4, and please watch out for the kids. Another thing I'd like to talk about is elections. Again, I wanna talk about it because this is gonna hit, I want it to hit the airwaves so people that do watch us on Sunday evenings can hear what I have to say, 'cause by the time we meet again, we won't be able to get out to the public. But elections are coming up on November 4th, and it's amazing to me that in the countries that we've helped liberate and bring democracy to, when people go to vote, they're getting 70, 80% turnouts. People are just astonished that they now have a choice and a vote in their own election, in their own government. And here in the United States, the country that pretty much started it, 25% is considered a fantastic turnout. And I think that's a little bit ridiculous. And we sit up here and we complain about our school boards, we complain about our locals, our states, and our federal governments, and how they're wasting money, we've all heard it. Ladies and gentlemen, you gotta get out there and vote. Everything that we do up here, we do because you put us here, and we all try to do our best, but we need to hear your voices more than just as a complaint later on, when, when we may or may not have the abilities. I think up here, everyone has the abilities and does a very good job, but it, to me, it's more important that you get out and vote. So by the time this hits the airwaves and by the time we meet again, you'll have a next, one more day, the next day after we meet, the next time, which is November 3rd, it'll be election day. Please, everyone, get out and vote. Thank you very much. I'm done.
Audience time. Fred Gordon, 951 South Lewis Avenue.
Honorable Mayor and councilwomen and men, my name is Fred Gordon, and I am the current owner of Waukegan Fruit Market. My family and I have lived and owned businesses in this community for 90 years. I'm in the process of selling the business in order to pursue other endeavors. There's a positive development in this transaction, as the buyer has received formal loan approval to purchase the business. One of the required conditions of the sale is that a liquor license be obtained. The buyer has submitted the appropriate paperwork and is a qualified buyer and business owner. We want to continue to work with the governing bodies to get authorization necessary for the buyer to obtain a liquor license in Waukegan. We are requesting that the mayor and the city council support the sale of this business to a viable buyer. The business continues to provide employment opportunities in the community and local access to food in an area which would otherwise be underserved. The buyer is in the process of putting together substantive information to support their license application, and will be contacting the appropriate parties to set up the necessary meetings. Thank you for your time, and we appreciate the consideration.
I'll speak on behalf of this. Mr. Gordon came to my office about two weeks ago, he asked me for a liquor license, I told him that there were none, none available, but I would put him on the list. I have never, nor will I ever move someone above someone else in any list in the city of Waukegan. There are 12, 11 businesses before him to get liquor licenses. Walgreens has three liquor licenses, they're trying to acquire three. CVS is trying to acquire one, and several businesses, and I do understand Mr. Gordon's plight, but unfortunately, I am not prepared, nor am I willing, to jump anyone else and put him in a position higher than where he is. So that's my position on that. Anyone else wanna make a comment? Free to. Next is Jane Ferry, 531 Leath Avenue.
Thank you for the time and for honoring the beach cleanup people. It was great to see so many kids out at the beach cleaning up with us. A lot of the little guys that you saw here tonight actually did come out and pick up garbage and play in the water and throw rocks in the water. It was so much fun to see, and it really reminded me that we have to cultivate the youth volunteerism. They got it. They understood why they were down there, they were excited to be down there, sure they played, I think all of us kinda dawdle sometimes when it's nice weather. So it was wonderful to see them understand the importance of community service, so thank you, Alderman May, for setting that up and inviting us all to come down there. Last weekend, I'm happy to report that there was one night when all three theaters on Genesee Street had something going on. It was fun to see all the people walking around, the restaurants busy, it also happened to be Art Walk and Zombie Walk, so there were a variety of people down there. Everyone seemed to be getting along very well, but it's so exciting to see all three theaters busy. And to that, I, I do wanna point out that Clockwise has Impenetrable, running Fridays and Saturdays at 8:00 p.m., Sundays at 3:00 p.m. Night of the Living Dead runs Friday and Saturday at 8:00 p.m. at Three Brothers Theater. Every now and again, you'll see some celebrities there. I'm looking at you, Mr. Mayor, I'll happen to see your picture there. And this Friday, Masters of Illusion will be at the Genesee Theater, and I'm happy to report that Teresa Caputo sold out two nights at the Genesee Theater, Saturday and Sunday. So expect good crowds, expect the restaurants to be business, or busy, rather. People are coming downtown, things are happening downtown, please come down and enjoy it and support the city that you worked so hard to build up. Please continue to, to invest in Waukegan and especially the downtown. All of the restaurants will be open all night that the Genesee is, are running shows. If you have any questions, please feel free to call me at my office, 847-623-6650, or if you're looking for something to do, please do see our online calendar at waukegaminestreet.org/events. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Dulce Ortiz, 10 South North Sharon Road.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Alderman, for the opportunity, and my name is Dulce Ortiz, you might know me by candy, and I'm here tonight to echo the comments from Alderman Concan, where our voter turnout is extremely low, and it's very sad to hear, so we are trying to educate our community in regards to the upcoming elections. So the Waukegan Action Team of Lake County United, which includes Waukegan Public Library, Most Blessed Trinity, Coalición Latinos Unidos de Lake County, also known as the Latino Coalition... Most Blessed Trinity, Coalición Latinos Unidos de Lake County, also known as the Latino Coalition, Sagrado Corazon, Christ Episcopal Church, the ACIS Organization, and also Iser, which stands for Illinois Coalition for Immigrants and Refugee Rights. We are hosting a candidates forum this coming Sunday, October 26, at 3:00 p.m. at Queen of Peace, which is located on 910 14th Street in North Chicago. We will have the congressional candidates, which is Republican Robert Dold and Democrat Brad Schneider. We will have the candidates for state representative, which is Democrat State Representative Rita Mayfield and independent Keith Turner. We're also going to have the Lake County Board for the 9th District candidates, which is Democrat Mary Ross Cunningham and independent Jermaine Castellanos. And we'll have the candidates for the Lake County Sheriff's Office, which is Republican Mark Coran and Democrat Jason Pad. So I urge the public and everyone here to come and educate yourselves, listen to the candidates, and please go out to vote Tuesday, November 4th. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ortiz. Motion adjourned by Alderman May, second by Alderman Mosia. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mean adjourned.